Thank you, Bob. You're new Canons, you're new Canons, Steven Spielberg back there. All right, here we go. Good evening, everyone. This is town in New Canaan Town Council, regular meeting, including a public hearing. It's Thursday, March 30th, 2023. It's about, let's see, it's 7:03 PM. And we are going to start the meeting with Troop 45 and some comments from Aiden here. And we'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the invitation to lead the town council in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. My name is Aiden Proster, Senior Patrol Leader at Scouts BSA Troop 45 at St. Alwishes. We are one of the three Boy Scout troops in New Canaan. Will everyone please rise? Color guard, attention. Color guard, advance. Color guard, halt. If you're in uniform, scout salute. If not, hand over part, hand over heart. Please now join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America. In the Republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, for liberty, justice, for all. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Color guard dismissed. Thank you, Aiden. And thank you, 45. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the most official one we've ever had. Thank you, guys. Amazing. All right, Mark, you want to call roll?
Yes. Robin Bates Mason. Rita Bettino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jimskey, here. Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman. Mike Morrow.
Mike said he's going to be in about 90 minutes. He had a delay.
Okay. Maria Naughton.
Here.
Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Orman. Christina Ross.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Mark. All right, item number two, approval of the minutes for our regular meetings held on March 14th and March 16th, 2023. Are there any revisions, corrections, deletions?
I just Hugo Alves spelling on the 14th, that's it. And I'm assuming that Josh went over all the numbers because. I checked spelling.
Hugo Alves name is spelled incorrectly?
Yeah. Should be. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tucker. All right, item number three, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the council on agenda topics scheduled for review and or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to total number of speakers. Would anybody in the room like to address the council? Seeing none, Bob, do we have anybody out there? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Item number four, first selectmen's update. Welcome, Kevin.
Well, again. Long time no see. Long time no see. I just popped him in, so I forgot I was supposed to be up here. I have no COVID report. We do send out a weekly email. We're down to five cases, but anyway. Waving House, 80 acre bathrooms are underway, as I reported back in January. They're making their progress. The 220 Elm Street building has been demoed and is on schedule for a July occupancy for the Board of Ed. The PD renovation project continues on schedule. For an October departure from the Police Department to the temporary 39 Locust Building. I don't need to talk about the playhouse, I hope. As we talked about last night. Tiger's back there. Road repaving for 2023 will begin soon. And the horrible experience for people on Harrison and other places where waving continues to dig for. Their big pipes is underway, but should be over. And then during the summertime, they'll be in. In front of these school and bringing it over to Wilton, so. We should have a road paving of a lot of streets beginning, right, Tiger? Go. I think I mentioned, or at least I mentioned to the selectmen, the land trust has been successful in reaching an agreement with the taxing, first taxing district of Norwalk to buy the 1124 Valley House, which we've been working on for four years. In addition to the house, they'll buy an additional acre of property to create a connection to their 10 acre brown preserve. So we're very pleased with that. They would like the town to participate in the open space purchase. We have about $150,000 in the lap. Land acquisition fund. So I'll be making a proposal on that soon. That will be their headquarters for the land trust as well as. Preserving the, one of the oldest homes in the canon. We had a meeting the other day on the progress of the urgent assessment program, which continues to serve 14 residents a month. Very pleased with the progress of that program. We have reached agreement for the town. He's in the budget for the town and the Board of Ed to participate for $100,000 combined. The community foundation hopefully is going to be contributing $50,000, including the $18,000 that was raised with the. The town players. What's the name of the show?
Ordinary People.
Ordinary People. And the town of Weston has agreed to join, so. Still hoping Darian will join, but. Anyway.
How much are they going to pay?
I don't want to say a number until they actually take action over there. West cell tower. I'm going to propose on Tuesday that we take a pause for six months and have a committee appointed by the selectmen to study. The solution for the west side of town. We have a proposal from VCOM, which is a telecommunications. Should say radio frequency engineering firm in New Jersey that works throughout the Northeast to do a drive test. Like Centerline did in 2014 to drive every road in town and give us a report of all three carriers. And that would be a foundation for the committee to make some. Current assessments of how we're going to solve the remaining deficiencies we have. There have been developments, but new technology, two weeks ago. The FCC proposed rulemaking that would allow satellites to device. Communication, as you know, iPhone is already offering that with 911. And the FCC is proposing. Actually, the Congress is proposing to fund a next generation 911, which would allow 911 calls to go to satellite if you can't find it. A cell tower communication, so that's interesting new national news that is developing. And then finally, I would just comment that the, I'm very pleased with the Board of Finance came out with a 3.14% increase. That was amazing work, considering I thought we were going to be in the 45%. Expense increase budget, but we. We always find some tricks to. To, I shouldn't say tricks, surprises, good surprises, really bad surprises. And I'm very happy we're under 4%. And we have a revale coming up in October, and that'll reshuffle the cards in terms of who's paying what. But I think we should be bouncing back down into a 17 or even 16. No rate with that rebel, so. That's my report. Be happy to answer questions.
Questions for Kevin.
I do on the south tower.
Sure.
So that I'm glad that we're having become to the coverage study. Are we planning to do the RF study as well? Or is that kind of moot? Is that a moot point because of if we don't even end up using cells?
A drive test means that they drive every road in town.
Right.
And they measure each carrier.
Right.
According to the kind of service you're getting there.
Right. And RF's completely.
That's an RF study.
Radio frequency study does not, is that's not, that's coverage, though. It's different.
That's, that's your service in each, on each road.
Right. That's service RF.
So you talk about the FCC compliance report as far as.
No, I'm talking about radio frequency emissions report, which is, it's a study that's completely.
Define that for me.
Also, yes, I need the information.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's also maybe for Tom and Hillary. So the Utilities Commission, how does that work with this committee, the committee that you're forming? Because I think.
Well, again, I publicly stated, I don't favor the reinstitution of the Utilities Commission. That I'll talk about that when you finally bring it to the, because I don't know what they would do other than cell service right now. And no other town around us has this Utilities Commission that functions in a, in a way that is relevant to what we're talking about, so.
So we'll see how.
I've talked to both Bob Clay, who was one of the members still and Derek, what's Derek's last name? They have no. Derek.
Bennett.
Bennett. They have no interest in continuing.
Okay, well, I guess you guys are the co-chairs.
Yeah. Well, we're, we're going to have a committee meeting and.
We'll figure it out.
Discuss it. Probably, you know, move ahead, but whether it's implemented will be another matter. We can only take it to the point of creating the ordinance.
Right. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Kevin. Any question? Maria, you're driving, right? Are you a passenger out there? You have any questions for Kevin?
No questions.
Thank you. Be safe.
I'm not driving, Steve. Don't worry.
You look like you're flying. Okay.
She does.
All right, so item number five, under the charter, we are required as a council this time of year, it happens every year, to have a actual public hearing on the budget. So item number five addresses that. This is a public hearing tonight. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the council on proposed fiscal year 2023, 2024 town budget. Speakers are required to provide their name and address. Comments will be limited to two to three minutes, subject to total number of speakers. And obviously, this is all about the upcoming budget for 2023, 2024. So with that, I will ask if anybody in the room would like to address the council on the upcoming budget. Seeing none, Bob, do you have anybody out? Okay, so we are about to set a new record because not one person spoke at the Board of Finance meeting. And not one person has, from the public has spoken at the council, so. With that, I will close the public comment section of the budget, and we'll move on to item number six. One comment, though, before we get to item six is we, given the fact that we've sort of reduced our number of publications, we probably should try to talk about next year. It's some sort of public announcement or something so that we at least tell people and invite people to come. Because I feel like we have the meetings to hear from people, and unless they know that we're meeting, I'm not sure how they would find out if they're not pushed to notification. So maybe we'll talk about that next year. All right, item number six, elected official salaries. Approval to approval of elected officials, the town clerk, town treasurer, first selectman and selectman salaries. This is a Mark Jimskey and Tom Butterworth project. The council assigned these guys who are great enough to get a meeting together with two members of the Board of Finance and go through a lot of data. And collected a lot of information, so I'm going to hand the meeting off to Mark and Tom to run through the data. And then we'll have our discussion, and we're not going to, we'll have a show of hands to move it forward, but we don't actually vote tonight. So that this, these numbers will go into the budget and be voted on and, you know, as part of the overall budget.
By the way, the two members of the Board of Finance were James Yow and Chris LeBrie.
All right, Mark, correct. So yes, the four of us met twice. And on your tablets, you'll see the spreadsheet that, that we created. I guess Tom and I created to help guide us with a little bit more clarity around the numbers and looking. Yes.
One question, Josh, is there any way to get that up on the screen for public consumption or? Okay. Mark, you can keep going. I just wanted to make sure folks at home.
Should be put up there.
I'll send it to Josh and he can share a screen.
Thanks. Yep. Great, so. We tried to make it easy, so there's a 10-year look back at this, on the salaries of the first selectman, town clerk, treasurer and the Board of Selectmen. You'll, you'll see it going back to 2013. What I did in the column to the right is basically if we assumed a 2.5% increase in salary over that 10-year period, what that salary would look like each year. I did that for the town clerk and the first selectmen since their salaries have been more consistently rising. The treasurer a little harder because at one point we were only paying $1,300 a year 10 years ago. And the Board of Selectmen have been a pretty constant number. Below that, you'll see. Comparable compensation for the first selectman, town clerk and treasurer for towns around us. And those are current numbers to the, to the best of our ability. Spent a lot of time making sure these numbers were fairly accurate, or mostly accurate. And I'm very confident in them. You'll see where our, our current salaries are for the first selectman, town clerk, treasurer. Again, the Board of Selectmen is really not relevant in some, a lot of, a lot of towns are, some cases of towns don't pay for the Board of Selectmen. You'll see, I'll also point out the treasurer, a lot of treasures around are part-time positions, some are full-time. I've indicated where they're full-time. One case, there's a volunteer in Fairfield, and note that in. The CFO is the treasurer, so I labeled that as the CFO, and you can see that that, that salary is very different. Through our discussion. It should, it should be noted that in some cases, we were giving cola to a couple positions. The, the group decided that we weren't going to use cola. We're simply going to set a salary for the next two years, and it's going to hold flat. And then in two years, we'll go through this process again, as we always do. So in, through the discussion. We decided that a 10% increase roughly for these positions was warranted, given the fact that it's going to be held flat. Over the last few years, there's probably been a fair amount of cost inflation, so we thought we would keep with that thought. And we, we came up with 10%. And we can certainly discuss that once Tom and I are finished. I, I think it's also important to note that. Everyone may, each position may be different in other towns. Some towns are bigger, some towns are smaller, some towns are smaller. Tenure for some people are different. So there's a lot of variables, and we thought just to throw a baseline out there and put 10%. It's very subjective, so. That's sort of where we came out. You could see for the recommended salaries for the first selectman are $171,000. And you can see it's a 10% increase over the current salary. The town clerk raised to 133, which is a 10%. The treasurer, we took up to 30,000, which is, represents a 14% increase. And the Board of Selectmen, it's very nominal, but it's now $9,000, which is represents 12% increase. So Tom, any, I'm going to keep quiet now and perhaps.
I just wanted to comment that. I'm aware that we go through this process every two years, and it has been handled in the past. In a pretty thorough manner, so I. Partly out of respect of that process in the past, but also a, a sense of wanting to find some simplicity in this process. To, to, to generally assume that the basis that we, is reflected in the current pay levels. Reflects analysis and historical, you know. Insight and therefore that. In general, we did not do a deep dive into. Meticulously going through and comparing the role of the, our first selectman with other towns and what the roles are and how to pay and duty by duty. We didn't do that because we, we didn't think we were really starting from scratch. I'm not sure everybody among the four of us. Had exactly that perspective, but that was mine, and we came out with the same numbers, so. So I think it might, might make sense to go through, maybe move these, the approval of these through a motion, but then, then have a discussion where we go through position by position and get everybody's input that has input.
Yeah, and I think also just in closing, the group thought that, and everyone should keep in mind that these are elective positions, so. You know, it's hard to, to, or I think the group thought that, you know, we could go back and forth as saying this, this person's doing this. And relative to this, well, everything's relative, and unfortunately, we all agreed that these are elective positions. And even if you thought that it deserves a 20% increase, it really doesn't change the complexion of this, so.
I think it's been true historically, and it's certainly true now, that people serve in these positions, run for election for reasons other than just the compensation. In many cases, people run for these offices because they're, you know, retired or semi-retired. And we appreciate that sense of civic responsibility, and we will not compensate for it. We feel that the rewards are part of the, of the reason why, why people run. So there's not, the point of that is, there's not an attempt to, to match corporate compensation practices or roles. You know, chore by chore, activity by activity. It's more, in effect, there's a discount built in in recognition of the fact that there is a reason why people line up to, to, to play these roles.
So should we motion?
Yeah, so let's make a motion and we'll move to discussion. So a motion to move, Mark, I mean, Tom, just second.
So second to these, these, these dollar numbers in the top line of the chart, yeah.
And then we. Yeah, so that if you go all the way down to the bottom, there's the recommended lines, and that's what we'll be discussing, so the bottom line.
Also on top as well.
Yeah.
So did we, did we actually repeat those yet? We haven't stated.
Oh, yeah. All right, so. To the, I'll read them out. The recommended, the committee recommends salary for the first selectman of $171,000. Town clerk of $133,000. The treasurer, $30,000, and for the Board of Selectmen, $9,000.
All right, so we'll open up to discussion. You, you can take, Josh, can you take that down so I can see? Folks on Zoom.
I'm going to vote that. Oh, we're going to vote after the.
Made the motion.
Right, all right, so I see Christina, you had your hand up the longest, so why don't we start with you?
Yes, I think that we're not voting on these. Is this a motion to vote on these salaries?
It is Christina. We're trying to, what we're trying to do is move it into the budget, so Josh can prepare.
Okay, Steve, first, I raised my hand to speak before the motion was made. And I don't think that we are ready for a motion without a discussion.
Oh, yeah, no, this is what, this is what we're doing now. We're having our big discussion right now, so.
No, but there's a motion on the table.
Yeah, that's the point. The point is to move it, the point is to discuss it and move it to, Josh needs to prepare the, the books for us for next.
So all right, so let me start by saying the following. According to the town clerk, the raise that we voted on two years ago. For the town clerk was changed in the minutes by error, I'm sure, not intentional. And the error has continued, and the town clerk has been denied the second year salary increase that was voted upon. I have the video where Sven makes motion. For both years. He said 6,000 for the first year plus cola and 6,000 for the second. Would you like me to play it so everybody can see it?
I, how would the quality be?
I.
Well, let's try.
Because we have, you know, Christina, we.
Oh. That's, that's not going to, that's not going to be very good.
Well, but you can hear it.
I, I think the, the. I wouldn't.
Increase the salary of the town clerk by $6,000 per year with the addition of the coin.
We, we have a legal opinion.
I don't care about a legal opinion. We voted on.
Care about legal opinions.
And the minutes, the minutes were voted on unanimously, and I did not say that.
I'm sorry, Tucker.
I reviewed the video.
So we did, we, I believe we discussed this in, in, I mean, this was this discussion because. The chairman, John Engel, at the time, then. Repeated back. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tom.
That's correct.
No.
Am I correct? He repeated a 6,000, which then was voted on.
No, no. The way that Robert's rules of orders work is that you make a motion, unless the motion is amended and another motion is raised. The vote was taken on the motion by Sven. I second that motion. John did not ask to change the motion, and nobody seconded. So the error just is conveniently then interpreted to be something that it wasn't. And I welcome the other members of the town council who were present for that vote to speak on it. I don't want any other votes to be taken and then be misconstrued. If there was a question, it should have been raised. We tried discussing it offline. We still come up to the same. And the town council did not appoint two members of the Governance Committee to, to review this. The Governance Committee is comprised of other members that were excluded from this discussion. And instead, opposite to or contrary to the charter, members of the Board of Finance were included. I, this whole thing is just.
So what are you?
Contrary to what you said, Steve, that this needs to be a discussion in public.
So Christina, let's, let's break down. This is the first I've heard this, so let's break down what you want to do here, because we've got a, we've got decisions to make tonight. So what you're saying is that you think the town clerk is owed a $6,000 increase, a back increase for this year, is what you're saying.
Cola, yes, correct.
And if that's the case, which I don't know, that's a, that's a HR issue for some other body, that's.
No, it's a town council issue that the town did not follow the vote of the town council.
Okay, so Christina, that, again, that is an HR issue that is going to have to be addressed, and if.
And it was brought up at the meeting with Cheryl and Tucker present, including Penny. And, and the committee comprised of Tom and Mark ignored it and went ahead and left the salary as it was. Now they just went with that because the HR department did not change it. What's going on?
Christina, just, just, let's finish the, let me just finish that. We're setting a salary for 23 and 24 that has absolutely nothing to do.
Yes, it does, because Mark said it's 10% from the present salary.
Let me finish. You've interrupted me three times.
Okay.
This is why I love meetings in person.
I'm sorry, I'm out of town and I can't be there.
Okay, so then at least please don't interrupt.
Mark, you have the floor.
No, you do.
Okay, so. So we're talking about a salary for 23, 24. It doesn't have anything to do with the issue you brought up, because we're not talking about a $6,000 issue here. What we're, what we're discussing tonight is the salary for the town clerk position, first selectman position. And all the other positions we're talking about for the next two years.
But it's based on the salary that is based.
If you, Christina, if you listen to what these guys said, they are basing it on the salary, but they're also basing it on a 10% flat increase.
Yes. But based on what? Look at, look at Mark's chart.
Christina, I was furnished information for two years. If you knew something was wrong. It, it's, I am using information that is paid to people, the salary, their current salaries. It's not me or Tom. For, for two years, you didn't, you didn't bring this up.
I brought it up at the meeting. What are you talking about?
Again, but you're talking about a salary that, that was two years ago decided, and you, apparently, you didn't remember that that was an issue then. It, it had nothing to do with Tom and me. We have the salary furnished by the town. We went off of those salaries. That's it.
I'm sorry, Mark, but you're mistaken. We spoke about it at the meeting, and it was just passed over as if, well, we'll have to discuss it offline. This is ridiculous.
Well.
If there's an error, Mark, Steve and the rest of town council, I would hope that you would want to correct it, not bury it.
It would, Christina, we're not burying it, and we're, we're actually discussing it. It would be nice to get the information before we're literally having this conversation. So I, you know, here, here's what I would suggest, because what you're saying is that it's a $600 difference between the recommended, if, if.
6,000.
It's 10, no, I'm talking about going forward. I'm not, I'm not living in the past. I'm going forward into the future. You're talking about a 6,000 times 10%. It's a $600 difference here. That's what we need to concentrate on. I'm not going to go back and try to correct tonight. That's again, I'm going back to the fact that we don't pay these people. We just said it. We don't pay them.
And when we said it, we expect the HR department to comply with what we voted on.
So the only, Christina, the only thing that I would ask in the future, if you have information, you're holding your phone up with a video, which obviously you had for a while. Can, we circulate all kinds of information between the 12 of us.
Please, Steve, don't put it on me. The issue is if the town council votes on something, whose responsibility is it to make sure that it's passed on and comes to pass as it was voted?
If Steve, may I just for a moment, please?
Yes.
Out of respect for Christina did bring this to our attention a while back and we did have a meeting on it. And we looked back at the minutes, the minutes were then sent to Ira for review. The minutes, whether they're in error or not, um, the minutes stand as voted on. And the minute state that she receives a one time $6,000. That's what the minutes say, Christina. If, if that was incorrect at the time, I wasn't in the room when all that was taking place. I'm just telling you, that's what the minutes say. And Ira says, unfortunately, you can go back and say, well, I think it was this or I think it was that, or I believe it was this, but it's what the minutes say. And how the minutes were voted on is what you have to, that is the legal.
Were not voted on. The motion was voted on.
No, no, the minutes were approved at the following meeting.
But if there's an error.
But you voted in favor of them. That's when you identify an error. Then you don't identify an error a year later. That's what Ira's point was. But those minutes were unanimously voted, that they were accurate.
It's two years ago, not a year ago.
Tucker, is it true that, my recollection is that Ira reviewed the video as well?
He did. And he, um, and he agreed that the minutes were correct as per the video.
But this Christina, that was our response to your raising the issue in committee. We, Tucker reached out to get a legal opinion. We have a legal opinion.
Okay. Do you have the opinion in writing, Tucker? Can you please send it to me?
Um, I don't have it written, but I can certainly get one. I think you were on the call with Ira when he gave us.
I wasn't.
Well, he joined us at the, at one of the meetings, but I will get that for you. But that is a Robert's rules of order. When the minister approved at the following meeting, that is the legal record of what transpired at the meeting.
Then, then we have a problem with the way in which the minutes are being transcribed. Then I move that we hire somebody else.
Nice to hear from Maria and Penny.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, Maria, you've got your, you got your hand raised, Maria. Let's, uh, let's hear from you.
Um, I, my uh, concern is that if, if it was voted on and this vote is taken every two years and it's a, it was stated per year, to me that means 6,000 for each of those two years. Um, and if, like, it's only coming up to us now because we're voting again and we need to have the right base on which to apply the current amount. But my other point is we, when we discuss transcribing minutes from videos, I'm pretty sure we said the videos are part of the record too. So I don't think we can discount it.
No, the, the minutes are the legal record. The, the video is supplemental, but the minutes are the legal record. And the votes that took place at the, at the meeting, that is the legal record.
I don't know. It, I heard per year to me, it's a two-year vote. And that means 6,000 per year. So I just, I mean, really for a dip, so I don't think we're talking a huge difference here.
Yeah, you are.
All right. So Penny, you're up.
Um, does it have to be on this topic? Or does, well, no, I mean, are we only, only on this aspect of the town clerks at this moment?
You, you've got the floor. We can move on to, we can move on to other things now too.
Okay. I have a problem with a 10% increase in the town clerk's salary. That salary already is the second highest of all the regional town clerks. The highest being Stamford, which is a huge department by comparison to ours. And therefore you would expect that salary to be higher than ours. Secondly, their responsibilities are statute required or dominated um, or prescribed, I should say. It's not like some town clerks have some responsibilities and some have others. Uh, there may be a few local um, considerations that the town clerk has to do, but basically it is a statute prescribed responsibility. So it's not that you are looking at town clerks at another department or other towns and having different responsibilities. They're basically the same. So I have a, a problem with a 10% increase. Inflation is what? 6.7%? The federal government just announced the past two weeks, their salary increases for government employees. And that was 5.2%. Um, I think if you have a and I know she's kind, this individual is going to say she's not a town employee. She is a state employee. Um, but she actually gets paid by the town. So if you come in with a 10% increase for someone who's sitting in town hall and considered a town employee, HR is going to have a huge problem with all of our other town employees who are getting 2.5%. And it would dramatically increase whatever union negotiations are going forward. So I think it's, it's out of proportion uh, to put a 10%er on that particular position and it would then be the highest paid position in the whole region.
Thank you, Penny.
Hillary.
Um, I obviously wasn't on council in the last, when that motion that's come up has, was voted on. But it does seem like reasonable minds.
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
Sure. Um, like I said, I wasn't on the council when that motion was voted on for the town clerk's salary two years ago. Um, it seems like reasonable minds are differing on what was agreed upon. Whether it was, I mean, when I hear 6,000 per year, that to me seems to sound like it's compounded, that it's each year. Um, and I understand the question about the minutes. I, I do think that they are pretty sacrosanct. But when you have um, reasonable minds who hear two different things um, and $6,000 in the grand scheme of a budget, the size of our towns is not much. Um, I, yeah, employee. Um, so I would, I would support upping the base at least and, and marking the 10% off of that. Now with regards to whether a 10% increase for the, for the clerk is appropriate. I, I do think it's appropriate and I do think that she is different from a town employee in that she's an elected official and she is required to live in New Canaan, which has a high standard of living. A lot of our town employees can elect to live somewhere else. Um, that's all that's official. She must live here. It's a full-time position. I think the, uh, the rent here, the rent is somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000, maybe more. And that's for a one-bedroom apartment. So I would support um, a 10% increase and I think I would support basing it at least off of um, an additional 6,000 on that current, if not retroactively, um, you know, giving her that benefit because I think that she, she counted on that and it's real money. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah. I just want to say that I concur with what Hillary has said. Um, I wasn't on town council either, but I did watch the tape. And one of the things that I had brought up before is uh, how the minutes are, what goes into the minutes. And um, after watching the tape, it seems like the minutes were more of a summary and not exactly what the motion was. So I do think that it's not a lot. Like you said, Hillary, in the grand scheme of the budget, $6,000. Um, and it does cost a lot to live in New Canaan and also with inflation and all the other things that we have to pay for to live in this town. Um, and I, I do also support a 10% um, increase, but off of a different base. So the base would be $6,000 added to the second year of the salary.
Thanks, Kim. Rita.
So I actually concur with both um, Kim and Hillary. And it's funny, Kim, because when I'm hearing this, I was hearing your voice at that other meeting saying, you know, we, we need to make sure that the minutes are accurate. And I would hate, I guess, again, like we can decide now that it, it should have been something different, but uh, if it's, if it is said per year, and that is what the expectation of this individual is. And I also agree with um, Hillary's assessment that this person needs to live in New Canaan. And that cost of living is pretty high compared to other places. I think this, I think it, I think it, it just makes sense. Um, and I would hate to think, think about, okay, so in this case, it's about a salary. But what if there was another, I don't know, another issue um, where the tram, the, what, what actually was said is different from the minutes? And there was some very, you know, catastrophic, I don't know, something even more um, uh, impactful, if there could be a thing. Um, and we would, and we would side with what the minute said, even though it was incorrect. I just, I feel like that just isn't, it's for the sniff, the sis, sniff test for me, it doesn't pass.
Okay. Thank you.
Mark, I just want to say for the record to correct, I think what was said about the committee, we didn't choose to ignore what was stated two years ago. We based our recommendations off of information, actual current salaries of these employees and we based it off of that. We didn't choose to ignore anything and I just want that to be stated.
And I don't mean to suggest.
No, I understand that, but Tom and I and James and Chris were going off of the information that's.
Please understand that if um, if seller, if Claudia had been granted uh, six, $6,000 and then another $6,000 cumulatively, that um, you should not assume that we would have been recommending the number we're recommending. Because the number we're recommending is based on, in part on comparability analysis with other towns. So. What, what, yes. Well, it is. We're, we're looking, it's right there on the chart, Penny. We, we're looking at town to town. And the point you of course made is that it's already high. So please don't assume that we would have added 10% had we added the 6,000. Uh, and another point on, on, on Ira's legal opinion, I'm a little confused as to how readily people are willing to dismiss our, our lawyer's legal opinion. And he wasn't, he wasn't opining the, on the words that were in the minutes. He was opining on the import of those words. In other words, what dollar amount results from having said those words? So if I were to tell somebody, you know, or, or in a compensation review meeting, somebody said, well, John Smith is doing a great job. He should get an extra $6,000. I would say $6,000 in an individual payment or $6,000 a year. Cause then the 6,000 would, would continue as in, in his base pay in perpetuity. But the, you know, what Ira's saying is that's what those words mean. That it's a $6,000 increase in your and so somehow, somehow this is being construed as saying, oh, we think that it should be, it should increase $6,000 every year. That, that's sort of unheard of. Uh, you know, it's.
Who's construing that, Tom?
Well, Ira Bloom looked at the, at the minutes and the videotape. And he said, what this means is her base salary went to X dollars. So we have a legal opinion that the numbers on our spreadsheet are correct.
I mean, I know this, I guess this is in the charter, but I find this whole process kind of unfair to a person. I, I, I just can't, I'm just flabbergasted that we're arguing over like uh, $5,000 in the grand scheme of the budget of the board of ed and everything that we vote for in this town. Frankly, Tom, I've never you asked to cut the budget. I've only been on the town council for a year and a half, but I find it to be out of line for us to have to discuss someone's personal salary in this level of detail and have so much pushback on $5,000. It's embarrassing.
So just to, I, I know, I mean, I, I applaud some of the folks that are new and I, I applaud the fact that you're bringing a fresh perspective to this. I really do. I think it's, I think it's great. I always, I always, when we get to this point of the year, it is uncomfortable because some of the folks we're talking about are actually in the room, number one. And number two, um, I always remind folks that you literally have to strip out personalities, names, association with titles, all that stuff has to go by the wayside. And it's really, really hard. It's probably the hardest thing we do when we talk about the first selectman and not think about the current first selectman and the town clerk and not think about the current town clerk, it's separating all those people. Because we are talking about the positions and not the people.
That's a great point. And so I would like to address that briefly, if I could.
Yeah.
About the town clerk. Um, I don't think that it's a ministerial job necessarily, particularly in the next year or two. I think last year, um, you know, we went from three voting districts to six, which increased not only the town clerk's workload, but obviously the rest of our voters had a lot of extra work to do. Um, coming down the pike from Hartford, we've probably got early voting starting or something along those lines that will be on the ballot. We have a huge presidential election coming up, probably with absentee ballot, well, definitely with absentee ballots coming up. So at this point, um, I don't think that it's a job that anybody can do, that just you learn the statutes and you're whatever. That doesn't deserve fair and adequate compensation. I think the integrity of elections is a huge, huge hot button issue these days. And I think that we need to make sure that we have someone in that position that we can trust and that is well compensated. Um, and I think in this town, you know, it's again, with the cost of living and requiring that person to live here, I am comfortable with having a very high quality.
And, and, and can I just?
Can I just quickly make a suggestion?
Sure. Cause I have.
Cause I wanna, I, I don't want to walk out of this meeting having set a precedent for ignoring legal advice. So let me make the following suggestion. Let, let's, let's, let's say that uh, we have the authority right here tonight to set whatever pay level we choose. Okay. So we don't have to get bogged down in the history. What I would just simply request is that we honor the, the legal opinion as to what was in effect for the past year. And, and say that's okay. And then, and then go ahead and make a motion for whatever dollar amount you choose. So if you want to add $6,000 on, on top of what we're proposing here.
Um, that's a great point. I, I think we should refrain from saying, saying extremely or very high the compensation. I, I think maybe it's adequate or appropriate. So to, to use the words uh, we're, we're proposing very higher, extremely high compensation. I think we should back away from that and just use appropriate. If we approve it and we like it, okay, good. If we don't, then we don't. And we don't think it's appropriate. I don't think the, the words very, very high or very low should be utilized here because I think the important function uh, for, for the town. And I think we're all, it sounds like we're all agreeing to um, nothing, the dollar amount. We're all agreeing that this disposition is, is very, very important. Um, you know, it, it, I think we should just call it if, if the numbers 5%, 6,000, whatever it is, that we, I think we should decide on that rather than allocating the words of very above or below. I think that's, I, I, I think we're, we're all above that.
Okay.
And I just want to make a general, just really general.
Uh, we'll get to the hands in one second. Rita.
Really quick. So I, I just want to um, address something you had said, um, Tom, originally when we just originally started. A lot of us have the luxury of being able to serve um, and not have to worry necessarily about how much money we're making. We all here, we don't get paid anything. Um, and it would be great to think that people in even electric positions who are paid um, don't need to be paid a certain amount of money, but that's a luxury for some people and not for um, all. And, and I, I would hate to think that we would only be able to hire people who could afford, you know, to serve. And you know, this, just to reiterate, this, this position needs to live in this town. And I think we need to take into consideration the higher cost of living in this town than other towns. That's all I'm saying.
That is a very, very good point, Rita. Thank you. Uh, Maria, you're up next.
Well, I, I did want to go back to what Tom said about the attorney saying if we go forward with this per year concept, it would mean in perpetuity. I don't, I, I just can't believe that's true since we do vote on it every two years. But I mean, that's just my opinion. So what I would like to say is I'd like to make a motion that we increase the base amount of the town clerk salary to 139.
There's a motion on the table already.
Yeah, we have a motion on the table already. So we'll get, we'll get to that motion, but we'll.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to amend that motion that we.
I, I second Maria's motion to amend the motion.
My God.
Okay.
But I want to see Cola added to it as well.
Do we just amend the amendment? Do we just amend the amendment?
Where are the minutes, where are the transcripts?
It was.
I want this to be very clear, so I would prefer it if you would vote on the original motion and then set up a new motion.
That's, that's, that's a great point, Tucker, thank you, so we had a motion on the table.
Wait a minute, I had my hand up.
All right, Penny, one more time.
Yes, and I have sat on this part of the town council for a number of cycles. Every single cycle, there is disputed commentary about this salary. No other salary of any of our elected officials or any other, anybody else. I just really don't understand why all the discussion about this particular position. It is an elected position, yes, it has always been an elected position. The individual who, over the years, has served in this position has always been a resident. If you look at the other towns, Darien, Wilton, Westport, Stratford, Stanford, Ridgefield, you name it. They all have to live in their respective towns and their salaries are nothing like this. And the cost of living in Ridgefield or Darien or here is a modicum of difference. I mean, it's really not a, a big difference. And you are now going to put a salary on this position. And in the regional analysis, in the Association of Town Clerks. Every single town clerk is going to be going to their town, looking at us. With the elevated, now the number one, most highest, you know, paid position in the region. And it's the, the domino effect on this is going to be pretty significant. So I think you've got to take the individual out of it, which I don't think people are. Increase responsibilities that may or may not be coming down the pike will be treated just like they were when we had the. Extra. In-person voting replaced by mail voting during COVID. Extra staff, we had, I believe it was 12 or 13 or 14 extra staff hired to handle that extra load that was not the normal, you know, pace of, of the office. So you've got to give credit to our own human resource department to understand what the flexibilities are, the, you know, rise and fall of different pressures in the department. To respond to requests for extra part-time staff, which is, which is granted all the time. So I just think you've got to really understand the impact of what your decision is.
Thank you, Penny. Christina. We need to move along here because we've got a lot to do, so Christina, one more time. Yeah, we think we've got a vote and we've got more votes and we got more motions, so. Thank you, all right.
Can I just say something, Mike has asked, can we table this until he gets here? Soon?
Chances are, we'll still be talking about it when he gets here. All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
Well, the original motion was, was to accept all the salaries. And I think, I don't know what the term of art is, but we need, we should remove that motion from the floor. That's called what, Brian? I know you've been following this.
You have to vote it down.
So, so, yeah, let's, let's reject the original motion. Which, which it applied to all the salaries across the board so that we can then free ourselves to talk about the roles one at a time.
Right, well, so there's a motion, there's a motion on the floor we have to vote on, so we have to, we have to.
Let's, yeah, thank you. So I move to rescind the motion to consider all of these salaries in the same action.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Okay. And then the next thing is there's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tom, if I may, you made the original, Mark made the original motion and Tom seconded it. So you two need to make the motion to rescind. It can't be somebody else seconding that, so Mark would have to make the motion, Tom would have to second that to rescind the original motion.
Done.
Motion to rescind.
Okay, thank you.
And that was unanimous.
And then the first motion that was made about. Well, so entertain a motion, let's sort of start from scratch. Entertain a motion to set the salary level at 139, is that fair? I mean, should we go right to the heart of the matter?
Let's do it.
Plus cola.
Well, no. We, the, the committee discussed cola and.
The 10% increase.
We're, we're, we're setting a salary for two years, which reflects. You know, the, the need not to have cola.
The, the thing is that every department has cola. And nobody has their salary frozen for two years. And what happens especially with the town, with the first selectmen's salary. We have, we've done that in the past. And the salary then decreases in comparison to other department heads. So I don't recommend that you freeze it. We've had that problem for years.
Christina, I think.
Everybody at the same pace.
Well, yeah, well, I think the point that, that the committee is making is they, at 10%, they're giving a, a very generous. Bump in the salary for, for two years, and that's, that's during their.
Better than market. You're, you're getting a 10% increase in year one, when, to Penny's point, so we're solving both of your problems, which is. If inflation is tracking at 5%, we've done 10%, which is essentially 5% over two years. So I'm not, I, I don't understand how the math isn't really working for either argument.
Is the argument that that was still what she was promised in that meeting? I don't know.
No, no.
Something different, okay, I'm clarifying.
The, the last round, there were cola adjustments and those were honored, those are.
Okay, got it, thank you, thank you for clearing that up.
So this is a new cola.
Got it.
That's reflected in the, in the recommendation.
And we were, and the recommendation of the committee was to hold, hold the salary flat. With a generous 10% increase.
But that's not holding it flat, you're increasing it very generously, so I, I think.
Yeah, you're getting it upfront in year one.
Back to Luke's adjectives.
Again, that's why I put that 2.5%.
Exactly, I, I think that, Mark, you're, you're supporting, you're supporting what the request is. But we're saying we're not supporting it, but then we're going to give it.
Up front.
Yes, I, I, I think you're extremely generous, Mark, personally and professionally. And from what you're offering here.
That made my night.
I'll be babe. But in all honesty, let's, let's quantify what we're talking about here. Let's not use adjectives like very above or very below, because those words do not fit in terms of budget. Very does not fit here, even though it's used often. You, okay, said, I'm okay with this, we're going forward. So then I think this is, this is meeting the objective of exactly what the request is. So saying that I would not approve this, but I'm approving exactly what's requested. I, I think this is an extremely fair request. And she should 100% compensated the $6,000. For the bump. Right in line, I, I honestly, personally, if I had to say personally, I think it's below what, what budgetary inflation is. But I think if that's, I think it's okay.
All right, thank you.
Can we just vote on the 139? Because if we, if we pick a higher number, we're having a cola on a cola, so let's, let's vote on the 139, all right?
139 and the 10%, just to clarify. 139 the base and you're going with your recommendation of 10.
No, 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 let, let's just clarify the, the numbers, that her current pay. Is 120, 125, 120,586. When we were proposing to go to 133, that is the 10%. So the 133 reflects a 10% increase. The motion on the floor would, would preserve that increase to 133 to give her the colas. But add another $6,000 on top of the colas, that's the motion.
It's not a call, it's just.
No, on top of the, on top of the salary.
And you could say it a different way, you could add 6,000 to the base salary to the current.
Then 10%.
Yes.
Same thing.
Right. You're either adding six to the.
So it checks all the boxes in terms of, it is a little bit of a makeup based on our discussion earlier. And I, I, I think everybody should be happy, I, I would, I would think.
No, I'm not.
Penny, I, I know.
Agreed, thank you.
So I lived, I, I, I worked in personnel for years, I felt, you know. I, I established people's salaries and you do market research and they're based on comparables. And, and so if for years and years and years we have done comparables and come up with salaries. Now, all of a sudden, we're not doing comparables, I don't understand it.
Is appointed and she lives in Norwalk, she's not required to live in Darien. So that's the first comparable that doesn't quite fit this situation, if we want to talk comparables. The Stanford town clerk who, who works there, the cost of living, you can find a more affordable place to live in Stanford than you can in New Canaan. So if we want to talk comparables, let's talk comparables.
I'm at Darien and Wilton and Ridgefield then.
Darien is an appointed position and she does.
It's not.
And Darien, it's on the website, Penny.
I move the question, can we vote?
Yes, yes, let's vote.
All right, so, but, are we going to move them all or one at a time?
No, one at a time.
All right, one at a time, all right. So on, on the floor is a motion to set the town clerk's salary at 139,000, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, so we need a motion.
I'll move to set the town clerk's salary at 139.
Second, Luke seconds it, all in favor. Uh, let's see, so we've got one, two, three, four.
If it's not unanimous, must be done by roll call, please.
Okay, here we go. All right, so voting in favor, we have Rita Patino.
Yes.
Lou Kaufman. Kim Norton.
Yes.
Steve Carl, yes, Robin.
Yes.
Hillary.
Yes.
Uh, who's out there, Christina?
Yes.
Maria?
Yes.
Those are the yeses, okay, opposed. Mark Jimskey.
Yes.
Yes, opposed.
Yes, you're opposed. No, I'm, no, I'm opposed.
Tom Butterworth opposed and Penny opposed, okay, so that motion passes.
Eight to three.
Eight to three, thank you. Now, Mike is on his way, he's not here yet. All right, so let's, let's move on to.
We move on, sorry to interrupt. So what happens to the salary from this year that she didn't get the $6,000 increase?
I, I think we just, we just made her whole in a big way, so hopefully.
So we're, that's not going to be resolved with the minutes or.
You can't change the minutes according to Ira, you would have to take that up as a whole new issue.
That's not up to, again, that's. But, but that's our swim lane.
But important going forward in terms of, you know, transcript versus minutes, I have to say.
But we made it very clear tonight, so far, we made it, our voices are clear.
Yeah.
Our minutes are clear.
I think it's, it behooves all of us to be very careful in reviewing the minutes.
Yeah, yes, because once you approve the minutes.
Something doesn't, if something looks hinky, go back and watch.
Right.
The video, right?
Yeah, it's just a lot.
Have to be careful before voting on them, that's our responsibility.
Yeah, and I'm just, I totally agree, I'm just going to put my plug in since I'm the minutes person, well, Tucker really is, but. Can we get a transcription service that we can get the videos transcribed so that they can be? I mean, to me, they seem as equally as important as the actual minutes themselves.
Well, you'll have to put that into the budget because the one meeting that we did was $385. And so we would be doing that, and that was a rather short meeting. So there's a budgetary implication there.
Okay, thank you, and also I think they need to be archived as well, like YouTube is great, but I think we need some kind of a system to. Get it in a, you know, a town kind of lockbox, it is the history of the town, so.
And Chris Kaiser's been looking into that, that also is a very expensive proposition, but he's looking into it as well. I, I would, well, okay, that's enough for me now.
Thanks, Tucker. All right, we're continuing our salary discussion.
All right, so I would move, so let's, let's have a motion and then we can have discussion about first selectmen pay. I would preface my motion by agreeing with Rita on the question of town clerk, that it shouldn't be discounted by public service because it is a full-time career, but for these others, I think my observation, I would argue, is, is more applicable. But I'd move the first selectmen recommendation of the committee to, to, to move first selectmen's salary from 155 to 171.
Every seconds, okay, motion on the floor, discussion. Christina.
At the meeting, I proposed that the salary of the first selectmen should be the top salary of the town, and it wasn't. And I think that primarily that was the reason why the increase. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you.
So is it now the top salary in the town?
No.
How, how far, do we, can we, do we know how far below it is?
Well, in the town, this side of the budget, it is the highest in the town, in the town, town hall it is, but outside of town.
Oh, I see.
So we have.
Board of Ed would.
We have Board of Ed.
No, and CFO is higher than the first selectmen.
Board of Ed, which is the most important.
It's also.
Want to talk about your salary, Brian?
Also overtime of other departments, it's not just the Board of Ed.
Yep. It's okay.
Thanks for the self-awareness.
Is that a combination?
All right, all right, let's, let's keep on track here, so.
Did I get a second?
I seconded.
No, it won't.
No, no.
Town Hall, it's not?
Not even on town hall side.
Wow.
Oh, wait a second.
Yes.
Oh, when it takes effect.
What's that? Well, this is their job, actually, I have to say. I mean.
So, so who would be at that, at that point?
Even CFO will be hired.
CFO is higher.
Okay.
Well, she deals with the money, so.
How much higher?
We're.
Or that position.
Yeah, yeah, okay, well, this is, obviously a 10%.
Remember what Tom and I started up, these are elective positions, there is a discount, it's just, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I, I, I know, but we, we can't be comparing, this is what we, this is what I mentioned early on. And I think it, it's not constructive to say, well, who's the highest paid in town, bring in the board. It's not constructive.
We're not talking about the Board of Ed, Mark.
You are in, in your comments, you're, you're kind of making it implicit in it, but.
Mark, I think that's an excellent comment and I support, I think you're, you're absolutely appropriate.
I mean, that was the whole, all right, moving on.
So that was Tom and Hillary?
I have your back.
All right, so we have the motion on the floor, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you guys, moving on to the next one. Uh, what do we have, treasure?
Mark, you want me to talk?
Yes, please.
But by the way, we'll take a little break here, because when we set this up, we thought this would be the easiest thing ever. Because we've got the Board of Finance involved, we got you guys involved, and I want to, I want to say that I, I thought the perfect way to do this, and I still believe it is the perfect way to do this, so thank you for doing this.
So you're saying this could be worse?
No, yeah, it could be a lot worse, could be a lot worse.
But thank you.
Keep, keep on rolling here.
So as you can see from the chart, treasurer historically began as more of an honorarium, $1,300. Then in 2018, it was, it was increased to 20,000 in recognition that, you know, real work was being done. And it's basically been adjusted mostly for inflationary considerations since then to 26,201. And the, the proposal of our group was to raise it to 30,000, which would be a 14% increase. And we can move that in a minute if we choose to, but I did want to give some background that since we started this process over the last few days, we've gotten some, some information. As we, as I conceded earlier, we had not done a deep dive into every one of these because there was, we felt that the history was relevant. But in this case, the information that we've gotten recently, in my opinion, is that in, 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 in beginning to look at other towns and the type of responsibilities, there's a, that there really is potentially a lot more here that 30 does not, would not reflect. Unfortunately, we haven't had a chance to study all the details, so I'll just give you a, an example that we should all be aware of. One of the functions that the treasurer now performs is basically investment management. He actually process, he actually, you know, orders that the trades. Uh, the, the, that result in, in the pretty much excellent management of our cash, uh, accounts. And, um, uh, in, in other cases, this, this function is outsourced for a management fee. And so if you take a management fee of, uh, twenty five, uh, point two five percent. Um, that actually would, we would be paying an outside manager, something like a hundred twenty five thousand dollars to perform this function that's being performed. For thirty thousand. I'm not arguing that we pay a hundred twenty five thousand. I'm just saying that that's one of the factors that suggest that, um. Uh, that, that there may, uh, that, that another number may be more appropriate. I think in the discussions we've had, where, because we haven't done all the analysis, activity by activity, uh, we can't find the perfect number. But if we had some number higher than thirty, it might be a more rational transition to reflecting what, what is being done. And so some number like forty might be, uh, more appropriate. I'm throwing that out there. I was on the committee. So let's give the committee some respect and I'll move the thirty and you guys can vote that down and, and someone can propose what. The, you know, the, the, the actual number might be. So I'll move the thirty thousand. Uh, do I have a second or?
Is it second?
Yeah, all in favor? All right. It's, um. Just Robin.
You should have discussion.
Discussion, discussion. It's second.
I'd like to propose that it be moved to forty five thousand.
Anybody else?
So I don't, I don't know what number exactly because I haven't done the work. Um, I have looked into this and I absolutely agree with your assessment. I think what. This position lately has been doing is much more than what has been done in the past and, and has resulted in very favorable. Um, economics for this town. And I do think it's deserving of a higher amount. I just don't know what that number is. So that's, that's, that's where my dilemma is.
And, and I'll, I'll just add, my dilemma is, you know, again, the sheet that was furnished to you, there's part-time employees working in other towns. I, I don't have their job descriptions, which makes it complicated to your point, Rita, which is so true. And then there are full-time positions that are getting compensated well ahead. So I, you know, this is definitely. One of the topics that is harder to dissect.
Yeah.
For sure. So this is the best we could come up with in putting numbers on paper.
I'd like to give deference to, to Penny and say that next time we should do a deep dive and we should compare it activity by activity and we should come up with. Something that we think is, is, is a better reflection. We don't have that now, but I'm saying that that, that could end up with a substantially higher number. Uh, forty or forty-five, whichever it is, i- it would, would be a, a transition, uh, adjustment. Uh, is one way to think of it. Maria, your hands raised.
Um, I would totally support that. I, I remember before, um, the current treasurer started. And the change, you know, just the decisions he made, the knowledge. I mean, I think he, he has reached a lot of benefits for the town and, uh, more than covers. You know, double that amount, even more. So I support forty five. I support Christina.
Thank you.
Can I say something? I, I support, um, Christina's proposal of forty five as well as Maria's. I think the return on investment for the town is just amazing in terms of all the stuff that the treasurer's done in terms of. Managing money and strategically, uh, handling all the interest rate changes and all the things that have gone on. And I think in order to attract. A treasurer for the town, uh, someone similar if, uh, we need to, I think that that's a competitive salary and, and so I support forty five.
I one hundred percent back, uh, Kim is, and her, uh, comments, um, being active, uh, in a hiring position. Uh, at a multitude of different various positions, I think this position is extremely valued. Um, uh, for the town and it, it, it provides, um, extreme benefits. Um, I, I think that the, the proposed dollar amount and structure, uh, i- is very easily digested and should be accepted. So I, I support it a hundred percent.
Excellent.
That, I just, Mark, I, I, I do just, and I, I appreciate everyone's comments and, and agree with them for the most part, but. Kind of going back to where we started, you know, this isn't corporate America. We can't base. Uh, elected these positions off of, uh, metrics that you would tend to use in a private workplace. So I just think it, you enter a slippery slope and. Just to be mindful of it because, you know, once, once we start bringing this up. We're going to bring it up again and again. And, you know, I, I could argue that the position deserves half a, a million dollars. But I don't know. So. Just have to be, I just want to be mindful of all of these things.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Comments?
Oh, Penny, sorry.
I will just remind everybody again, until you have done a position evaluation. You really don't know where our position falls as far as the level of responsibilities. How much time is required for the execution of the position? And to all of us just tonight, sitting at a table and say, okay, not thirty, well, maybe forty, now maybe forty-five. Really isn't based on substantial enough information. Um, you know, would we be saying the same thing if the market had been going in the other direction? You know, because this position and making a recommendations for our investments. Takes it both ways up and down. So since we've enjoyed the up. With the decisions that have been made, we're all feeling pretty fat and sassy, you know? But if it had gone the other direction, we wouldn't be quite so generous. Um, so again, I will say we have got to do in-depth research so that we know that we are compensating on comparable responsibilities.
Thank you, Penny.
I mean, can I just say, I think when the Silicon Valley Bank. Failed, the money was managed in a way to decrease our risk and we, we didn't have a lot of exposure to risk. So I think. In terms of the upside and the downside, the treasurer's done a terrific job and, and, and the CFO and all the finance department.
But sorry, thing is, it's, I feel like we're voting on the position, not the person. So going forward and with the town clerk, there was a question. So I can understand why we'd increase that, but I think a fourteen percent increase. For a position, I, unfortunately, we're not voting for the person because it's an elected position. So I would be in favor of the fourteen percent increase. I think that's.
Me too.
Fair, good.
Can I just, well.
A third, a third or second or fifth, that whatever.
So I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I hear what you're saying that we're not voting on the person, but the position, but. The person who's in there now has really set a precedent for how we would like to see it done. And therefore, I think going forward, that's the type of person we would want to attract. So while you're right, it's not, you know, it's not the person itself. I think the activities that that person has now begun to do. Are indicative of how we'd want it to go forward. So I do think it's, I, I think it's worth more. And I, Penny, I hear what you're saying. Like we don't, I, I would like to do more in-depth, but I, I, I still think forty or forty-five would still be well below, well below. Corporate America. So again, it is, it is, I'm a little, I'm troubled a little bit by the randomness, I have to say, but I think it's well under what, you know, a corporate. Position would be and I feel comfortable with it.
I think we should compare ourselves to corporate.
I just said that.
Let me, let me just. Let me speak to the. Hey, Luke, Luke, guys. Let me speak to the randomness issue. Um, we, we, in this process, we were assuming that two years ago. Uh, that analysis versus market had been done. Uh, but what we're learning now is that there are things that were not taken into account. So. Uh, I would strongly recommend for the next round that we do the deep dive and that we're not guessing and we're not appearing random. But I think what we. Uh, what, what has come to our attention is that it may be, it may be that not all the, um, activities performed by this role. Were adequately taken into account last time. So we're, we're saying it, now that this is in, in front of us, we're reacting to it. And we're not trying to reach the optimal, you know, exact right level. We're just trying to do a transition adjustment that we think is easily below, uh, what you could argue is appropriate for the role.
You know, there's another thing when you do the comparison, we've got to remember that we have a new head. Actually, we've had two heads of the finance department. In the past two years. And so have the, uh, responsibilities of the treasurer changed. Um, to the point that it is a, uh, position that carries much more responsibility than it had in the past. And until we do a in-depth analysis of that position, we're not going to know whether or not those changes. Have occurred and need to then be reflective in a salary or if they have not occurred. Uh, so I, as again, I, I will say probably by the twelfth time today, you've got to do an, a ma- uh, market analysis. To understand from a municipal governance standpoint, what the comparables are.
Thank you, Penny. Christina.
Um, I think that, um, there have been historically, um, salary comparisons with other towns created. With many errors and we keep saying that every two years we'll do a deep, but we'll do a deep dive then later. And it, it, it doesn't happen. And I don't think it, it needs to be, um, rocket science, but I think that a. The time to start is now, but to increase the salary is really a recognition of the value added to the position. And to Penny's comments, yes, we know by the returns and the additional income derived from those investments. That his input has been of value to the town. So for all the hours and all the work that he's done in elevating the position. We should reassess what a compensatory, um, amount is that is fair. Because we don't want him to stop doing it. We want him to continue to do it. And forget whether it's municipal or not, he's getting paid peanuts anyway. So why are we arguing about, you know, forty or forty-five thousand? Thank you.
Yeah.
Christine, let me just make a, sorry, and I apologize. I, you know, I apologize everyone. I came late. Um, just with respect to this issue. I mean, my opinion is that, you know, um, salaries are recruitment tool and, and, you know, whether it's Andrew or it's somebody else. That position I think is a key position in our town, uh, as an elected position. I mean, all of us are working here for free. Um, but that position takes, you know, a lot of time every day to, you know, educate. Watch the markets, watch, you know, all the financial instruments. How do we get a best return on investment? So there's a, a massive amount of effort that goes into that position. You know, fifty thousand dollars, you know, if, if that was the, to be, you know, what the number would be, in, in my opinion. Is, is more than warranted. You try hiring anybody today, right? All my clients are dying trying to find people. Dr. Lots is talking about how difficult it is to attract teachers. Compensation is a really important tool and we need, you know, Andrew's not going to run for that position forever and it'll be somebody else and there'll be inflation that's constantly creeping up. So. My opinion, given the great value that that position adds to the town, I think the maximum dollar we can throw at it right now is appropriate. So we continue to attract great talent to that posi- to that key position.
All right. So the, the motion on the floor is currently, Tom, remind us.
Was it forty-five?
Forty-five.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Any.
Two hands up.
Tucker.
Yes, I just wanted to help you out with one more thing. In doing some of the research and preparing for tonight and the previous meetings. I noticed in the minutes of town council of February two thousand and seventeen. Seems like the same conversation. I don't think any of us, well, maybe Steve and Penny were there, but, um, seems like the same conversation took place and there was a recommendation in there that you guys might want to think about adding into tonight. And it basically said that there was some consensus that the responsibilities of the town treasurer should be outlined and commensurate with the suggested new salary level. There was also some consensus that all the positions should be grounded in applicable job descriptions. It just might be something that you might want to add just going forward.
So Tucker, just to be clear, the job description, do we currently have job descriptions or? For any of those positions? I mean, obviously the first election doesn't have a job description. He just works twenty-four hours a day.
Um, I'm sorry, if I may, Steve, answer the question. It's written in the state, in the state statutes, what the responsibility of the treasurer are. So we can take that excerpt and put it into. Our job description, the same thing for the town clerk.
You can add to it, right? Yeah, Christina's correct. Yes.
You can also delete because some of the town treasures are finance directors and treasurer. You know, rolled into one. So.
You can't delete. You can't delete from the statutes.
Okay. Forty-five thousand is on the floor.
Am I seconding or am I making the motion?
No, we have a motion on the floor for, for forty-five thousand for treasure.
I'll second it.
Okay, Tom made the motion.
Yep.
Rita second it.
Second it.
We've had our discussion. All in favor of moving this forward, raise your hand. Oh, Luke's out of the room.
Okay, and we're going to need it by roll call again.
Okay, so.
So, so Tom made the motion with Rita seconding for forty-five.
Right. Uh, so Rita Patino.
I support.
Say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Kim.
Yes.
Mark.
No.
Steve, yes. Tom.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Robin.
What was that?
That was a no from Robin. Hillary.
Yes.
Uh, Christina.
Yes.
Maria.
Yes.
Penny.
No.
And we'll wait for Luke to get back. Tucker, you have all that?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight and eleven. Yeah. So it's just Luke.
Okay. All right. Let's put that behind us. Do we have anything else?
Well, we have Board of Selectmen.
Oh, okay. Good grief.
We did.
We did first select.
We did first life.
We need a board second, which looks really, my gosh.
All right. So, uh, you can make a motion for Board of Selectmen.
You want to give background, Mark, or? After what we just, after everything, I mean, we're talking about a nine thousand dollar. I, I don't even know where to begin. I mean, it should be zero then.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I mean, some towns don't pay their. I mean, job description, I mean, maybe it should be fifty thousand dollars. I don't know. The arguments that just came back and forth have totally thrown out the process around. So I, I'm. I'll make a motion on the nine thousand just because that's what we, we spend time with.
I'll second that. All right. So Mark made the motion, Tom seconded Board of Salary set at nine thousand. It's currently what? Uh, eight, okay.
Little over eight.
Twenty-one.
Eight twenty, eight thousand, twenty-one dollars. Okay, could we just pause for one sec? Luke is back in the room. We took a vote. That's okay. We took a vote on the, uh, setting the, uh. Town treasurer salary at forty-five thousand and. Okay, so he, Luke is a yes. So you mark him as a yes. Okay, back to this. So. Background a little bit on. Yeah. Board of Selectmen. Yeah. On the Board of Selectmen, um, I think the committee was very aware that it's. It's where does eight thousand dollars come from? What does that reflect? Uh, and there's, I don't think there's ever been any effort to look at, at activities or responsibilities performed and align it. Uh, it, it is a time-consuming job. So is, so is the job that the rest of us hold and we don't get paid at all. However, the, the thought was it's there. We have the tradition at eight thousand. As long as it's there. Uh, gi- give it a cola so that it, it basically is the same in real dollars. Um, that's as far as our. Analysis really went on that. I think we're all open to the argument, Penny's argument, that, that there shouldn't even be pay for that position, but. This is our recommendation. So any other discussion? All right. So anybody, uh, Christina, your hands up.
Um, did I understand Tom correctly? He's saying that there shouldn't be payment for this position?
Well, he's just, he's being a devil's advocate to his.
Okay.
That's Penny's argument. So.
Okay, my original, no. My original recommendation to the committee was to increase the first selectmen salary to a hundred and eighty thousand. Making it the highest salary for the town, not the Board of Ed. And they reduced it to, I believe, one seventy was the recommended. And I still think it's too low.
So let's.
Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, the Board, we're talking about the first selectmen.
No, 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 no.
We already said on that.
Yeah, that ship's sad.
I think that the Board of Selectmen has to be increased and I don't understand why throughout the years Penny keeps saying. I think that the board of selectmen has to be increased, and I don't understand why throughout the years Penny keeps saying no, nothing, or reduce it to zero. It should be compensated.
You agree with the nine thousand?
So there's a motion on the floor for nine thousand.
I think it should be up to twenty minimum.
Alright Penny.
I tell you, we're just spending taxpayer money right and left here. Actually, when you do do a comparative analysis, Darian has five selectmen, no compensation except for the first. Fairfield has three selectmen, no compensation except for the first. Ridgefield has five selectmen, no compensation except for the first. Wilton has five selectmen, only the first selectman is salaried. And Westport has three selectmen, the two selectmen are paid two thousand a year. So I think probably
Just call me. Can you call him back?
Christina, you're on. What we probably ought to do is just go ahead with the nine thousand, but then when we do the charter review, really deep dive into the whole number of selectmen issue. And along with that would be salary, no salary, or or whatever.
Thank you Penny.
No, I wasn't.
Okay.
I am too.
Alright.
I think two and, you know, tonight is enough.
Okay.
Is it fifty or nine?
It's nine, it's nine. Alright, so motion on the floor is nine thousand, all in favor of board of selectmen at nine thousand.
All in favor.
All in favor. And that is, nope.
Unanimous.
We're not unanimous. Okay, so, but.
Who is it?
Oh, so here we go. So Rita Patino.
Yes.
Luke.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Steve, yes. Tom.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Robin, Hillary.
Yes.
Uh, Penny.
Yes.
Christina.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, we are unanimous. Okay. Alright. That was easy. So yeah, you can't have that hour back of your life. So so, uh, once again, Tom, Tom and and Mark, we gave you the assignment. Uh, and I want, and I want to thank Chris Labrie.
Sorry.
James Yow for doing this. I I truly believe that involving the board of finance is a good idea. Um, maybe we'll have a little tighter discussion the next time we do this, uh, but um, it has been an issue much like this over the years. And uh, this was a, this was, believe it or not, not as bad as some that I've seen, so.
Maybe if Tom and Mark were paid to do it. I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
Alright, next item on the agenda.
Could I actually just suggest you put it on the the um, town council chairman's tickler. A year out, we do a full position analysis of all of these four positions so that we have time to do a deep dive and never have this discussion again.
Yeah, actually Penny, it should resolve, reside in the um, town council rules and set a day for it.
Alright, we'll rewrite the rules.
Good. Alright. So I I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion. Guys, I'm gonna make a motion to switch seven and eight here because we have board of ed here, and I want to let these guys go. So I'd like to have the budget update and review. Uh, and then after that, we'll have our capex discussion. So we can let these folks go home. So item number eight. Uh, budget update and review. Do we need a motion to move those two things? Tucker, do we need a motion to move two things on the agenda?
No, no, you're fine.
Okay, good. Alright, so we're gonna do number eight, budget review and budget update and review. Further review and discussion of town council on the upcoming budget. And because of where we are and and having the board of ed here, I'd like to tackle the board of ed first. And then let them go home, as I said. So, um, if you want to um, pull up any um, you know, obviously, we had Brian here for an extended session. Um, we've all gone to the board of finance meeting and listened in a couple of nights. We've had a full presentation by the board of ed on another night. And then we had a a two-hour fifty-eight question really deep dive. So I don't know if there's anybody here tonight that wants to bring up anything else, uh, ask any further questions. Obviously, as the council, we are here and we can cut the budget. We can't add to it. Everybody knows the rules. So we have the uh, we have to have the budget passed next Wednesday. It's April fifth, I believe. Is that, that's correct, right, Josh? It's the fifth? So uh, and Josh needs time to get these book, books prepared and and get us all lined up for the uh, the fifth. So that said, is there anybody that would like to address the board of ed while they're here? And ask any further questions? Alright. Alright, oh, wait Christina, your hand is up. Is that just permanently up?
Can't be removed.
There you go. Okay, thank you. Alright. Seeing none? You guys should go home. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for a great budget, and we'll see you guys next week. Alright, thank you.
Uh, next time we should put them first.
Yeah.
Sorry you had to go through that.
Thanks for the help with the salary discussion.
It's Steve, can I make a comment?
Yes, Maria.
Well, my comment is next year, we should put them first in the lineup.
Yeah, so I I totally agree with that, Maria. And honestly, when we look at these agendas, it's so unpredictable in terms of what's gonna take the most time. I mean, it's really.
Why, why, why don't we? Um, i- if there are topics where the people are in the room, they should be going first, and that topic should have yeah, anything that's just among us should be held to the end.
Yeah, what I would expect over the years, we've had questions, we've had, but we've we've had, we've had a lot of we've had a lot of people um, at the last minute ask questions, so. But yeah, it would be nice to get them out of the room. Alright, here we go. So while we're in, while we're on i- item number eight, we need to talk about anything else that you want to review. Uh, Josh, can you come up and just um, I want to walk through anything that we found along the way here, which isn't a lot, but I think there was maybe three items altogether so far that we found.
Great, um, the twenty-five thousand taken out of tax-supported capital for the light towers. That was from DPW's ass. There was a hundred thousand that really should have been removed uh, during the board of finance for online permitting for the health department and uh, two hundred fifty thousand removed for Irwin Park main house from the DPW um, town buildings capital. Those two last ones are, they would have been bonded, so it doesn't really have an impact.
It feels like a week ago, but it was yesterday. Um, discussing the two million for the athletic foundation, that's there, I was confused because it's, it sounded like it was two and a quarter million. There was a quarter million from last year. There's two fifty from ARPA, and then we were gonna bond. Was, are we bonding one and a quarter, one and three quarters?
It's in there.
Okay.
I think they wanted to ask to change that to one point seven five.
Okay.
So I think the number you're going to approve, unless I'm mistaken, during this round is the one point five what's in there since you can't raise it. But when it goes back to the board of finance for the actual uh, bond authorization, it'll be at that newly raised number of one point seven five that you'll then vote on after the board of finance votes on it in April. If I have that correct, I think.
That's okay. Got it. Great.
Um, I have a question. Do we know how much has been spent on the playhouse yet?
Total.
Yeah.
A one point seven five million, then the encumbered, wish that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on operating or capital? For Josh? Oh, Christina.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to follow up to Kim's questions with Tiger. How much has been spent at the playhouse till now?
Oh, yeah, you couldn't hear Tiger. I'm sorry.
One point seven five million.
One point seven five was the number.
Yeah, Tiger.
And what did that include?
That was actually on the sheet that I provided, but the uh, it was uh, the demo. Included the exterior work. Uh, majority of the interior demo or all of the interior demo abatement, um, purchasing of the HVAC equipment. And uh, the fire service line, electrical service line and water service lines that were uh, brought into the building.
You already purchased the HVAC system?
We have a, well, it's encumbered. We haven't purchased it yet. And we haven't released the uh, the purchase yet, but if you ask where the money was coming from, it's coming from that line.
I guess my question is, is one point seven five the money that's spent till now? So what's left of the budgeted amount?
Two point two. Two point one five.
And and you're asking for a total of what to the project?
An additional four point zero eight three.
Yeah, and remember, we're gonna have that discussion again. So it'll, it's going back.
Yeah.
Or to finance, then we come back again, so. That's another.
Thank you, Tiger.
Alright, Joshua, walk us through the process on uh, Wednesday night. You're gonna give us a line item. We're gonna vote, vote on it by line.
Well, not, not by exactly by line, but there probably are about twenty-five
Categories.
You'll read slash vote on. Um, it's in the similar vein as the board of finance going through parts of the uh, general fund operating as well as the sewer and other funds. And then kind of tentatively approve the bonded capital projects and of course approve the tax-supported capital and other supported capital projects. And that's pretty much it.
Alright. Any other questions?
Big capital projects that were, are we just talking operating right now? I don't want to jump ahead.
No, no, we can, we can talk about uh, capital.
Big, just so I'm clear, what are the big capital projects that we're considering this year?
So the, so, yeah, so that we are gonna do that capex spreadsheet. Um, so we can get into that, and we'll ask Josh to stay for that, so.
Then I can quickly.
Yeah, let's, let's.
Through.
Yeah.
Uh, there's the pumper replacement for fire, which is a million. There is a police station and the training facility.
Are those two separate line items?
That's not gonna.
Okay.
Yep. There's playhouse, there's the NCAF.
And is the NCAF, I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
No, it's fine.
Is the NC, the NCAF though, is just the press box portion and the R portion of the press box portion?
No, there's several. Or just for this year. You're right, you're right. The phase one, you mean?
And again, that's something that we'll, we're gonna come back to that too, so we're gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
Right now, the number is.
Yep.
Oh, so they're so they have to go back to.
Right, yeah, right.
Right now, the, right now, the request is four million dollars for the NCAF, two million from the ends, from the athletic foundation, two million from the town. However, that gets split up, it gets split up. But, you know, and then there's, to your point, there's, you know, B, C, and D, two, 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 two uh, in the next three years. But it's still got to go back to the board of finance on the eleventh. They'll decide at that point in time, what, if any, comes forward. And then we'll come back to you, I think, on the nineteenth for that. But uh, right now, they put a pin, what they consider to be a pin, and two million dollars, how that gets broken out. Um, we'll discuss that at that time, and then it'll come forward to you at that point. But now, right now, in the budget, there's nothing.
Isn't there three hundred?
There's three hundred thousand. Yeah, I was just gonna say. It's one point seven five. I said it's one point seven five.
Bonded in two hundred fifty, tentatively of ARPA.
Right.
So those will be before us next week?
No, that's before you now. Well, next week, yes. And then we'll, then we'll go back and, like I said, we're, we're we're looking to revise that number by about a quarter million dollars, and then we'll come forward again.
And will that be the additional quarter of a million dollars? Will that be added to what's bonded?
Yes.
Okay.
If they, if that. That's correct.
That would be added to the bonded number.
Correct. You're welcome.
I'd just like to clarify, though, technically, you don't vote on on the capital budget next week.
Right.
And therefore, when you say that one point seven five in the first year of the five-year plan, I'm not sure at what point you acknowledge the five-year plan? And uh,
I think they do need to acknowledge the projects before it goes back to the board of finance.
So the, so the point is too, that we, some of these out year, second, third, and fourth year, years have to be added as well.
Yeah, and I I think Kevin, you're right, because in the past, we've, we've approved an operating budget. And then he's taking
Acknowledged.
And then we take a breath, I think. And then I think we've tackled capital a week or two or three, or our next meeting even. So it's not like we're rushed to.
Prove bond authorization, it's an appropriation and bond up. So it's, it's really coming when bonds resolutions come.
Alright, so the, the schedule or that five-year capital is us acknowledging that we've received it and we are aware of what we're looking at, but we're not actually passing the, you know.
The tax-supported side of it.
Tax support.
Yeah, yeah.
They do need to be.
Yeah, that's in the budget.
Yep.
And the total, remind us again about that total, so.
The total for tax-supported, um, I think it's that's actually coming out of the general fund is five fifty-four, I want to say, um, after the removal of the twenty-five, but that's because there's, um, let me just.
Board of Ed and town.
That's Board of Ed and town, yep. Um, that was reduced because of use of fund balance within the tax-supported capital fund of uh, five I think, uh, five hundred thousand and the use of bond premium also that we had for five hundred thousand. If you look at it as a whole, it's closer to one point five million-ish, which is traditionally, it's one point eight million is tax-supported when we don't have supplementing funds. Um, so this got brought down to, right now, it's five fifty.
So the tax, just so everybody understands, a tax-supported capital is a much smaller number than, you know, these bigger, much bigger numbers that we're talking about for.
They're the items that don't qualify to be bonded.
Right.
Or is it like under a certain?
Any other questions for Josh while we have him? Thank you, Tiger. I didn't see you. Sorry, Christina, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to ask uh, Josh to explain it to everybody because I was under a total different understanding. The money is given to the library are based on a grant and not necessarily distributed as we would to other departments. Which means that we don't have access to any of the information and how the money is actually spent, correct, Josh?
Well, we, we don't have any direct access to it outside of the presentation items or the libraries annual audit that they go through.
But we don't see the audit.
I think it's, I think it's public.
Yeah, the audit's public. Yeah, the audit is public. That's the point of having it.
And when we fund mostly salaries, do we have a description and an actual count of what the salaries and positions are?
Or the library or the town?
For the library.
Uh, that I don't know. I I don't believe we have position control on the libraries.
Well, we have position control because they're asking us to fund it. I'm just wondering what the accountability is.
Um, are you saying they have too many people or you don't like?
No, I don't.
Operating, increase in their budget and salaries? I'm not, I'm, I'm confused. I'm not, I'm not sure what you're saying about employees.
I, well, the question was asked in various forms at the last meeting, how many part-time, how many full-time? And that, that question was not answered.
Yeah, actually.
I asked.
Yeah, Lisa, Lisa sent an email, um, with all those, with all the information in that email. She had a bunch of bullet points for us.
Can I ask?
Yes, Maria.
I, I think, I see the contradiction, you know, for every other department. You know, we just had a conversation for an hour on the town clerk salary and the treasury salary. For every other department, we see salaries broken out by title. The libraries mostly salaries. What is the obligation of the town as far as being transparent with that two million dollars that is handed to the library as a grant? It, it just seems like there should be more transparency to the taxpayers as to what, what's, it's being spent on.
Gavin, you know, the, as, as an association library.
Kevin, you know, the, as, as an association library, a separate nonprofit, I don't think we've ever asked.
We never had.
I don't know whether the Board of Finance liaisons have ever gotten into that, but I don't believe we've ever gotten the information or asked for it.
I mean, historically, the library staff has been so underpaid. I mean, you look at what they make over there, and you're like, how do they even survive over there? I mean, it's, it's
We don't know.
Of all, of all the areas to focus on salaries over there is probably not the place to go. I mean, I would say, you know, there's many other places, but salaries with all the, all the people there, they employ over there, I don't know.
Well, that's the concern, like, what, what is the concern?
Maria, stop beating around.
What is the concern that, that you have about the salaries? What do you wanna know?
We don't know what the position.
You want a job description?
What are the positions and what's? And the salary, the title and the salary, we have it for every other, every other department in town. And, you know, salaries are one part.
It's non.
Then there's operations and. Okay, so are you saying that the town should just allocate without no, you know, no questions asked every year a grant, the public has no right to understand what's, it's being spent on?
No, I, I mean, I think that it's, to your questions um earlier, Maria, which I thought were very, very good questions, and I, I'm, I'm happy that the library responded the way they did, they gave us all, you know, they answered every question that, that we posed. You know, much like the Board of Ed, um, there, and I'll use the Board of Ed as an example, there at some point in time, there's a, a matter of trust between the town and these different bodies that we, that we work with, and you know, the, the grant that, that the library's had over the years, and I was treasurer a hundred years ago, I mean, it's, it's worked the same way forever, I mean, it's, the town wants and needs a library, and we support the library and what, and what they do, and we give them a portion of their operating every year and have for you know, probably, close to a decade, I mean, so, I mean, not a decade, a century, sorry.
Yeah, I also don't know that I would have more expertise knowing like what they should be doing in a library, like, I kinda feel like the manager would know best.
Yeah, and I mean, the only thing about getting into salaries like that is like, are, are we actually gonna tell the library to cut personnel and tell them how to run the library? I, I just don't know that we'd ever get into that, get into that position, because I, you know, we always, that we need to stay in our lane and, you know.
Oh, no. About every single department in town, and I'm not an engineer and I'm not a, you know, I'm not any of those things of the people that I'm questioning, so I don't think, I don't understand, it's still two million dollars, it is growing. You know, I do think we should look for areas of collaboration with the town and possible savings in the future, but I don't see how you can. We need to get into that particular.
Yeah, breaking up a little bit there.
Um, Maria, they're not a department, and, and historically, the, the Board of Finance liaisons, you know, years back have, when they thought the budget was getting too high, they delved into more detail with the library, but uh we don't ask them to act like a department for their budget appropriation, under the charter, the Board of Selectmen is responsible for overseeing uh anybody who receives taxes and funds. So that, you know, if we wanna dig, dig into their public, their, their filed reports, um, we can get information, but I think generally people regard the library as well-run, and we see the aggregate levels of, of salary, so.
And I don't think uh the, what, what Maria is asking for is, is wildly like exceeding, I, I don't think there's, there's a lot of scrutiny and, and, and any negativity. I think it's just more, hey, there's a dollar amount, two million, whatever the dollar amount is, and where are these funds going? And um, I, I think I, I'm extremely proud of, of the library uh and, and what's taken place, and I, I, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but I think there's, there's a lot of pride i- in, in what's being developed and have been developed. Um, I, I think it's just more of uh, and, and uh, excuse me, and I apologize, uh, Maria, if I'm speaking for you, is just wh- what are the dollars? How, how, how's the kind of breakdown? I don't think there's a, hey, this person made sixty-two, and we want it to be sixty or seventy-two, or it, it was just kind of like uh putting a, a marker o- on the page to say, we, we allocated two million dollars to this and, and, and this is where it's going.
Well, I, I believe they list for the Board, for the Board of Selectmen how much goes to employees, and if you divide it by the number of employees, you can get an average salary, and if I heard you correct, Kevin, the salaries at the library are not egregious or high or low relative to the comparable libraries around Fairfield County. Okay, so then, I, I'm not sure, then, Maria, what, is, is that not enough?
I think the issue is more.
I think if we're just, if we're just gonna approve it, why isn't it in a different bucket if we're not gonna ask questions about it? I mean, I'm trying to do the same thing for the library that we do for every other department, but it seems like.
Yeah, so.
Not a department.
It's, that, that's the, that's the difficult thing here, it, it isn't a department, but I, to your point, I mean, if, if, if you want more transparency, we certainly can ask for more transparency, the library would be happy to, to develop that, I'm sure, and, and, and get it to us. But, you know, the, the deepest dive that I've ever remember any of the boards having, including the liaisons, was we had a discussion way back when about revenue generation, and there was a suggestion about raising fines and raising room rentals, and this is, this goes back to the years of, you know, David Bryant, basically, which is, was a while ago, but we talked about how can you generate more revenue, and we actually got into the nuts and bolts of the, the business of the library and had a conversation, but it really, that was the, that was the deepest dive that I remember ever having with them, because it's, it's such a, it's a tight budget over there and, and but I understand the transparency question, I, you know.
If, if um efficiencies are really what you're after, can't we just ask the question like, hey, um, can you analyze um your, what you're doing and come up with maybe some sugge, I, I just, I, even if we got that information, I just don't know what we would be doing with it.
Right, right, well.
You know, we would, we work closely with the library and many uh uh, like HR gives them support, we buy our insurance in common historically, so we do, and we provide their uh support for IT to some extent, so it's not as though we don't.
So you're aware of that.
We're aware of it, yeah.
Oh, I don't think that, you know, look, it's just the broader point is that I don't think there's a problem with more disclosure, especially when you're talking about government funds, right? Because transparency is the cornerstone for good, you know, governance, it just is. You know, it's not a, a trade secret or confidential about headcount and the corresponding salary amounts, right? Yeah, and I understand they're not like every other department, but every department gives us exactly what their headcount is and their salaries. So it's not a matter of trying to dig in and say, oh, well, so-and-so assistant, you know, blah, blah, blah librarian shouldn't be getting X, Y, Z, we can't make that call, we don't, we don't tell any department to do that. But I don't think it's a reasonable position to say, look, if you're gonna ask for two million dollars or whatever it is from the town, and we heard from this presentation, that number will be, will just continue to increase, you know, in perpetuity. I don't think it's wrong at least having a baseline point for us now in the year twenty twenty-three. Here's a headcount, here's a salary per position, you know, from the perspective of how much the town's gonna be asking in the future, let's have a baseline now and move forward, it's just not a trade secret, and we're not trying to dictate board policy through knowing, you know, who these people are, what their positions are, you know, and are they doing something I feel inappropriate, and under that subjective standard of what I believe to be inappropriate, it's just, it's just good governance, it's transparency, that's all this is, so let's have at least a baseline right now.
Mike, could I comment on that? I think that it is a trade secret in the sense they are, they're a private nonprofit. They are not subject to FOIA, like we are, you know, everything is public with us. They're not subjected to FOIA, so if they uh choose to keep it private, I think there's a competitive aspect to uh, to the library. But, you know, we know that they've struggled being in a very competitive market for, for staff. So I just don't know why we would, you know, get into an area where if they're not subject to FOIA, they have a legal opinion, they're not, that we'd wanna, you know, disclose something that other libraries don't, so.
You mean, because if we got the dollar amounts, then it would be subject.
It would be subject for you.
And they're, and they, and they have a board.
But my understanding was that they.
Port to their board.
That FOIA's flipped on that, there was a FOIA decision that said they were public, and, and that was a couple of years ago, and then the latest FOIA decision said that they weren't as of the latest decision. I mean, my, my point is, I've worked on grants before for the NIH and other um government entities, and there's a lot of accountability when it comes to grants. So um, I, I think that um if we're gonna give them the grant money, then we had, need accountability and monitoring the money that we're sending for the, you know, for the taxpayer, not for us to decide, well, do we like that position or not? You know, everyone wants to know how their money's being spent, and I think it's a great transition time, now that new library is being built, we're going from two four to two, up to two, what is it, two six? Yeah, we're going from two four, two five, two six as we go on, so it is gonna continue to, to grow. So I, I just don't understand what the resistance is um to wanting accountability for taxpayer money.
So I have a question, the MOU we did with library wasn't on the board, there are gonna be two towns, town council members?
Yes, we, two, two, two board members that report back to the council, so.
So recommended.
Recommended, yeah, so we, we, we still have that on our to-do list.
Okay, so that's not done.
Yeah, yeah, so.
So once.
Once that's done.
Back and.
Yeah, that's actually good, that's a good, that's a good.
Corbett used to be liaison when she was on town council, whatever.
Well, we have, yeah, we, we do, we currently have two liaisons or, or more to the library, I don't have that list in front of me, but there's, there's always two. Um, and it falls under whether it's general government or, and remember, those folks are supposed to be meeting with the Board of Finance privately with the library, and I've done that role here, and I've, they'll, they'll tell you how many wastebaskets there are if you want, I mean, you know, I but, but doing it in, you know, doing it in this format where we're dr- asking to drill down during, during that, the last second at a budget meeting, I mean, that's, that's tough, the liaison should be doing that work, and I think I said that at an earlier meeting. The, those meetings where we get in a room and literally everything's rolled out to us, that's, that's when we wanna ask these questions. How many headcount? How you doing? What do you, what do you need from us? What are you lacking? That's what we used to say. Where, where are we falling short as a town? What, what can we do to help you? Because there are, there's, there aren't too many residents coming in here saying, we don't want a library, and we don't wanna support our library, I mean, I, I don't, I don't hear that very often. And, you know, as long as they give us a budget, I, and to Maria's point, we got a, we got a second bite of the apple, I mean, we asked all those questions and they came back with the answers. And Maria, do you think, do you need more information than we got? Are you okay with what we have so far?
I mean, honestly, I don't know what an E S G coordinator is, um, I don't think that definition really helps much, but but, you know, at the end of the day, where is the transparency to the public? I'll be gone, you know, we'll all roll off the town council, but this is still two million dollars of taxpayer funds. And I just find it hard to believe that because it's called a grant, it's no longer, the public doesn't get to know what it is being spent on because they are a nonprofit.
So we had, we had the budget presented, and we had it in detail, and then when we rolled, Josh, you rolled down some of those.
You gave the long-form version of.
Well, that, I, no, I'm, I go back to the salaries because those are very explicit in all the other departments.
So is it just, Maria, to be clear, is it just the salaries that you want seen broken out?
Yeah, position salary, but, you know, just like in every other department. And the other thing is that. The collaboration piece, um, you know, a lot has come out of discussions when the Board of Ed is, was bringing in solar and, and that, just those discussions all happened in public, and they're, you know, we were told how much they were saving per kilowatt hour, I mean, there was so much detail, I feel like this new building, we should know what they're spending and where, and see how we can work with other town departments and maybe find savings.
But how much money, I mean, how much is the school budget, Josh?
Right now?
Yeah.
Twelve, depending on what you look at.
So I can see there might be opportunity for savings there, I, I, you know, looking at two million dollars, are we misplacing our attention and time and causing, you know, undue work when, I, I'm just, I'm trying to understand why, I guess. I'm really trying to get to why.
Well, there's, I don't know, twenty.
Right, I feel like this kind of boils down to your question about the E S G coordinator.
That, that's what it sounds like.
Do you wanna know what the E S G coordinator is being paid and what they're doing on a day to day, like, is that what this is about?
That's what it sounds like.
Just.
I want, yeah, my tax dollars are paying for something and I don't understand it, so what's wrong with that?
Environmental, social, and governance coordinator, she, and she gave you a paragraph about what that person does, and part of it, which she explained in the paragraph, is that they're an environmentally friendly building, which I don't know why we would, you know, they, they tried to use materials that were, one, not generated from slave labor anywhere in the world, and that everything is environmentally friendly, and I think they're putting solar on the building to generate power for the building.
They are.
Perhaps it'll get fed back in, they are composting at the cafe, I mean, these are not correct me if I'm wrong, these are not controversial things that are going on, so that coordinator is working on that, they bring in like. Excuse me, please don't interrupt me, they, they bring in speakers that speak about environmental causes. They bring in Planet New Canin to partner with, they, you know, they're working on this stuff, social things, I'm not quite sure what they're working, what they work on in that, but they probably make sure that it's an inclusive environment for race, gender, uh, special needs, they have a special needs family affinity group there, um, they've taken great pains to design the children's room for special needs kids, and we have several kids that have cerebral palsy that that room has been specially made for, and all of that was coordinated by the E S G coordinator. This is a simple call to Lisa. This is, this does not need to be out in public asking generally about salaries, if you have a question about the E S G coordinator, you.
Yeah, I did ask.
It's not a scary thing.
I, I feel like Marie is getting ganged up on, and I have to jump in here, I mean, I, I think it's a taxpayer issue of transparency, like any grant. What, I mean, maybe we should get a legal opinion, it's a five oh one C, they're private, but we're public, and we're giving them money, so what is the accountability for a grant? That would be interesting to know, do you know, Kevin?
Why don't we just?
You're nodding your head.
Fill those positions and then we'll have someone report to us. MOU says we're, we're gonna have some people on the board that we would appoint with the library, but it hasn't been built.
I, I think that's a start, I think that's a start, but I think this is a bigger issue with um, with more like, I mean, I filled out papers for an NIH grant that are like this thick. You know, I mean, and, and they come and they visit you, and they look at your facility, and they look, I mean, I don't wanna do that to the library, but I'm just saying, like, a little bit more of a formalized kind of agreement and accountability, more than, you know, someone verbally reporting, I think that's a great start, but we've, for whatever reason, have delayed that as well.
Well, we, so, again, this jump, some of this, we have to look in the mirror and ask ourselves, have our liaisons done their job? And a lot of this falls to us directly, I mean, we're, we're sitting here a week before the budget, and, you know, if you look in the mirror and you say, how much time did you guys all devote on your liaison stuff? I mean, that's really what it comes down to, and I know we're all busy, but these are the kinds of things that we all need to do way, you know, months ago, when we met with the library, or we met with Park and Rec, we met with all of the P D or Fire Department, you gotta get in there and you gotta drill into all these budgets, that's what we do, that's our job.
Something, I just wanna say, Hillary and Rita, honestly, this is not about the E S G coordinator, this is about two million dollars of taxpayer funds that there's no transparency on.
Well, Maria, Maria, hold on, that, when you say no, that's a big word, I mean, there's a lot of transparency, but you're asking for additional transparency is really the issue here, it's, there's not, we have a full-blown budget here.
I know, but every other budget.
Did not ask for a salary breakdown, now we're hearing we need, that you need more. You know, you ask what, we asked for a long-form budget, we got that, then you asked additional questions, Lisa answered those, now you want salary by salary for each position, it's just non.
Saying the same thing, I want a, a, a budget that looks like the others, I, I think I'm saying.
That was never asked, and now we're at the, tonight, at the end of the process, and you're at, and two, I get that it's two million dollars, I feel like I was.
It's, it's more than that, it's two point four, two point six the year after that, so it's more than.
To how, what percentage of the overall budget is that? And we're sitting here arguing, the, the library is a huge gift to this town, as far as I'm concerned, two point six million dollars is a steal for what we get.
Oh, they also.
Excuse me, um, community spent, the community, private residents in this town gave the library thirty-five million dollars to build that. Thirty-five million dollars.
Right.
Excuse me, I'm not done, I'm speaking.
And, and are you a donor?
I am a donor.
So maybe that has to do with some of your point of view, so maybe, you know, I'm just saying.
Well, Kim, 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 can we, Hillary has the floor.
I know, but I'm just saying that that's, that's part of it, I mean, you know, someone who's a donor is gonna be very committed.
We're gonna respect, Hillary has the floor, do I need a gavel?
No, she stopped, and I just said, are you a donor? I thought she was not speaking anymore.
I was actually speaking when you asked me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, continue.
Very proud donor to this library, I, if I could have given more money, I would have given more money, because I think it is, I actually think it's the crown jewel of our community. I think it's amazing, and I think that, that we, you know, I think the fact that it is a public-private partnership is so unique. I grew up in a town where it was incre- totally one hundred percent municipal, I had no idea that libraries. I grew up in a town where it was totally 100% municipal. I had no idea that libraries were anything but. So the fact that we only have to fund $2.6 million to me as a steal, the community gives so much of its own money to this library. And the fact that we're, it just seems like there's something else going on here. It's not about salaries. It's not about this. It's not about that. And the idea, you guys, this is.
All right, we, we need to wrap up.
But just say what you need to say about it. What is the point? What are you getting at? And it's unfair to the library. And then that's, that's all I'm gonna say.
So, so. So Maria, to be, to finish this up, and we've got it, we've got to move on. So why don't, why don't I take it upon myself? I, I can contact Lisa and ask for salary breakdown if that's.
Steve, I don't think you should. I, I think they would have declined if they asked.
Hold on a second.
They're not subject to FOIA.
Kevin, you, you, you're, I'm just telling you. People have their positions, that's fine, but you know, for the, for the, for the first selectman to be battling the town council, or at least some of us on a transparency issue.
Legal issue, Mike.
It's, it's not. No one's giving us a legal opinion. And I.
They have a legal opinion. They're not subject to FOIA.
That, but that's, that's beside the point. This isn't a FOIA issue.
Respect in the past about.
We, we have.
Ask, and if she says no, then well, we'll take her under advisement. And what if she says, hey, I don't care. Here it is. She very well may say that. We're all, you know, having our contentious dispute here. She may very well, she's the one that should be asked and she could state her position. If she says, hey, you know what, get lost, then that's her position.
They have, they have a market position versus other libraries. I think for them to disclose their salaries was something they wouldn't want to do.
Kevin, that's an argument for her to make.
Listen, listen, I'll ask the question and see, see what happens. Okay, so let's move on. Any, is there any?
Can I, can I just make one suggestion, please, that if indeed the town council wishes to have more information from the library, then we should make a recommendation to the selectmen and our legal body as to what we put in our grant conditions. I mean, we get, the town gets grants all the time that have all kinds of conditions to it. And so if one of our conditions is they must come to us annually with, you know, the printed document of their audit, then, you know, or specifics in the structure of the organization, then put it in our grant to them. If they don't like those conditions, don't, don't take the grant.
I think, I think Josh is saying again, you know, the audit is public knowledge and they do provide the town with a lot of information. So if, if it's not enough.
Put it in our grant request requirements.
I agree with Penny, formalize the grant conditions so that we have a regular reporting to the town council. And it's great to have liaisons and people who are passionate about the library, but it's, we owe it to the taxpayer.
I'm one of the biggest fans of, of the library, but if we're gonna highlight that, let's not interrupt any one person that's speaking on behalf of whatever initiative. I think everyone that's involved should have the same and equal opportunity, whether it be anyone that's talking here, rather than say, hey, let's move on. It's getting late. I think there's a lot of good points. And again, I'm, I'm the biggest fan of the library. I, I think it's the crown jewel. I think someone said that. It is. It really, it really is. And I'm like, I'm showcasing this. But I think if someone or everyone has a certain specific time allocated to them, I think everyone else should have the same opportunity to, to have their comments be voiced and heard.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so moving past the library now, onto a million other things. Is there anything else anybody wants to talk about?
Library.
We can joke, we're still friends, right?
Okay.
Yes, the Yankees and the Vincents.
All right. I think we've beaten that up enough. So any other questions on budgets with Josh's? This is the final call. So we're gonna call it and Josh is gonna do the books unless there's anybody else that has any issues. Josh, thank you so much. And we will see you on April 5th. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And so lastly on the agenda, we have the capex process discussion. So on your, on your tablet, you've got your, let's see, underneath tonight's meeting.
It's there.
I think CapEx framework tool is there. And you'll see the, let's see, the amounts and going across the top, utility management benefits, impact plans, offsets, totals. So this is where we're gonna drop in. Rita, you want to drop in?
So I think one of the conversations we were gonna have is based on all the capital projects that are before us. What, which ones do we think we should be putting in here? I mean, there's some that are gonna be slammed down because we're never gonna, we don't need to have a conversation about. And maybe, maybe we throw in a couple that we just want to have some practice with, that we probably know the answer to. So the first discussion is what, what, you know, which, which project do we want to include?
And you have a list of current projects that fall under these categories.
Well, we, I mean, we came up with these categories based on, you know, what was suggested. We may not fill some of these categories, like frankly. So I, I think it's, you know, do we want to put the, you know, the NCAF in there? Do we want to put planetarium in there? Do we want to put? I mean, obviously, we're not gonna, the police department, we're not gonna put in there, right? Because.
Yeah.
What, I mean, and so right now it's suggestions on what we should put in there.
It sounds like the, the Athletic Foundation?
Yeah, that sounds right.
What if you put recreation slash sports? Cause it kind of shows us, right? I mean, you're looking for categories.
Right. I think recreation, sports would be under recreation, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you've got NCAF.
Yep. Do you want to put planetarium in there?
Yeah, the planetarium we funded already.
But didn't they ask for more?
Yes.
They asked for more.
Asked for 150,000 more.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, that's good. Planetarium, sure.
The pumper. Yeah, we might as well, I mean, put that in there. It'll be pretty clear from that. Josh, are there any other like bigger projects you want to throw out if we're, if we're not thinking of them?
Isn't it Playhouse?
We put pumper replacement, NCAF and planetarium.
What about the Playhouse?
Playhouse? We can put Playhouse on there.
Yeah. Anything we're missing, Josh? I mean, is there any other? We, we.
Maybe not as big, but.
The town, the town players we funded.
What about the Board of Ed?
Well, the planetarium's in there, but that's one of them.
No, we're not gonna get into that stuff.
I think we have a, we should probably, a floor of, how much money do we want to?
No, I mean, if.
Like 100,000 or a million, I mean.
You don't have to have a floor because there are issues. Sometimes you come up with a $50,000 item that you say, what, what are we doing?
Okay.
I, I don't mind having. Yeah.
Yeah.
Christina, did you have something in mind? That you were thinking of from the Board of Ed?
Could she hear you, Christina?
Christina, was there something specific on the Board of Ed side that you thought cap wise? That you wanted to get on there to look at? You muted. You muted.
Sorry, anything that is listed on the five-year capital plan should go through the same process of going through the matrix and then value the projects. And obviously, we're not going to fund a project unless it's, it's within the maximum allowable on the bonding side. So there are a lot of considerations. What?
So, yeah, just to be clear though, what we're trying to do with this tool as an experiment is to insert, you know, up to maybe seven projects that would go through this tool to take a look at ranking them. So we're not gonna do all, you know, every single project. So we just gotta. But I think on the, the Board of Ed side, we said that there aren't any, so at the moment. And so if you go down the list here, if you go down the list, Park and Rec, do they have anything prominent outstanding that you can think of?
I think the, well, Erwin, the boardwalk, but that's from last.
Yeah. Did that, are they, that's, is that carried over again, or is that?
Yeah, that's.
First year.
Is that going in this year or no?
I would, I would comment on the planetarium that I, I don't know how, I'm not sure what binding effect this discussion is gonna have. But I would comment that the reason the Board of Ed showed up tonight was exactly so that they could be here for this type of a discussion. So once we sent him out of the room, it's a little awkward for me to be talking about cutting.
Oh, no, we're not. This is, and this isn't a binding in at all. This is literally like we're taking a test drive in a, in a brand new. Then we don't even need real numbers then, right?
No, it's a, it's a pilot.
Yeah, it's a pilot, it's a pilot. But it, but it's gonna, I think it's, it's worth looking at this because it is an interesting way to do this.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Can we pop, I mean, we don't have to sit here and pop.
Yeah, take time.
Why, why doesn't, why don't, why doesn't, why don't we task a group or to, to formulate it instead of us sitting here and. And then, and then come back with the populated stuff and then we can all move from here. But I really don't think.
That's a great suggestion.
Pick seven, do a little data sheet on each, so that we have all the information in front of us.
Yeah, I'm happy to, to make that suggestion. And in the meantime, as you're, you know, taking a shower, thinking about stuff, you might just, you know, think about a project we want to put on there.
Yeah, so we have four, we have four or five so far, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, let's see. We, yeah, I just had new business. I did talk to Ira and Nick today on the audit committee question we had from last night. And I'm gonna jump on a call with Nick tomorrow, 10:30 tomorrow morning. So I'll report back on findings. And that was the only thing I have. New business. Anybody else new business? All business. All right, it is 9:25. What are you gonna do with all your time? Motion to adjourn. That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you. Good night, Christina. Good night, Maria. Thank you. Bye, Penny.